Good evening, welcome to the November 3rd City Council Meeting. Glad to have you here tonight. I have the prayer and the pledge, so if you'll please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have given us and our city and our state and our country. Even though it seems like we're in terrible turmoil, we still pull together to get things done. We want to especially thank our veterans this week, as the week of November 5th through the 11th is Veterans' Veterans Week. We can't say enough about people who volunteered to give their lives to protect our freedom, protect our local law enforcement officers, our fire, our police, our first responders, our teachers, and our many fine employees that make our city run. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item is going to be a ceremonial item. I'm going to read a proclamation honoring our veterans. Whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, these contributions and sacrifices of men and women who have served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and our way of life by the people of the United States. Whereas we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremonial parade can fully repay the debt. We remember that our obligations endure long after the battle ends, and that we make our mission to give them the respect and care they have earned. Whereas America's veterans returning home, they continue to serve our country in new ways, bringing tremendous skills to their communities and their workforce. Now therefore, I Shane McFarlane, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire City Council, do proclaim November the 5th through the 11th as Veterans' Week. With evidence of our gratitude for their selfish dedication to solemn duty, they are carried so willingly in the wars waits to defend our nation and our freedom. Thank you. Ms. Bishoto, I'm going to lay this over here and you'll get it after the meeting. Okay, our next item is our consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look and see? Are there any additions or corrections? Anything need to be pulled off and discussed? Our staff, or where is staff? Where'd they go? Oh, there they are.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll move for approval as presented.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item is approval of minutes. Counselor, can we do this in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we need to approve or correct the minutes of the October 13th special meeting, the October 13th special meeting, and our October 13th regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Hearing that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Next item is second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16OZ37 to rezone an area located along Reed Avenue to Single Family Residential 4, RS4 District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item is considered passage on second reading. Final ordinance to rezone an area located along Bradville Pike to Commercial Fringe, CF District. The second reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Next item is considered for passage on second and final reading ordinance to rezone 16OZ40, an area located along Veterans Parkway to Single Family Residential 8, RS8 District, Commercial Fringe, and Residential Multifamily 16, RM16 District.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item is for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16OZ42 to zone an area located along Veterans Parkway east of Casey Lane as Residential Multifamily 12, RM12 District simultaneously with annexation. This is the second reading.
Move for approval on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Shacklet, second that. Call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item is considered for passage in second and final reading ordinance 16O43, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25, Schools, Section 25-2, regarding compensation for school board members.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item is considered for passage on second and final reading ordinance 16O32, amending Chapter 13, Food and Food Products, adding Sections 13 through 20 and 13 through 26 regarding mobile food vending.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Jennifer, thank you for all the hard work that you put the food, the quote "food vending ordinance" together and worked it out, and it's an outstanding compliment to the city. I saw signs advertising at Cannonsburg Food Vendor Truck Friday, so I think we've taken something and made it much, much better, and thank you for heading that up. Okay, all right. I won't make any more comments.
Pretty much says it all, doesn't it? Pretty much says it all.
Our next item is a first reading. Consider recommendations of the City Recorder, Finance Director, Ordinance 16O57, amending the 2016-2000 Budget, Second Budget Amendment.
Mayor, this amendment, we do the first part every year when community development, who is completely grant-driven, knows what's left from their budget from the year before. They reshuffle it into what the carryover will be in the various lines. Normally, that is a zero balance. They did find, our staff found, that there was a $770 error when we posted the budget this year, so there is a slight effect to fund balance this year to get that back to where revenues equal expenses. Additionally, they found where Delta Dental Insurance for codes did not get posted, so they are requesting that we add that in now. The net effect to use the fund balance for these two amendments is $12,270, and I do recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Where does that go? Which black hole does that go to?
The use of fund balance, it will increase what we'll use of our fund balance. We have cash for that, so we're covered in cash.
Outstanding. We need a, we need a motion.
Yes, sir, there's an ordinance, the next item B is an ordinance to make the first reading of that. It requires two readings.
Let's get off our hands.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
We also need a motion for the second part of this.
That, you just did that.
Okay, that did both of them. All right, our next item is new business pursuant to a resolution R16PH44 adopted by the City Council on September 22nd to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.2 acres located along East Clark Boulevard from Single Family Residential 15, RS15 District, to planned residential district, PDR District, the cottages of Clark, Blue Sky Construction applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the October 17th, 2016 issue of our local newspaper.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request being presented to you for property that's located on the north side of East Clark Boulevard. Property shaded in blue on the map that is pulled up on the screen before you, and you can see it's adjacent to Sinking Creek, located on the north side of East Clark Boulevard. It's very near the Loveless Photography property, which I think most of us are familiar. Across the street is daycare center, and some properties own multifamily, and adjacent to this property on the east and north side are developed single-family subdivisions. The applicants have a contract to purchase this property and wish to develop it, much like an existing development they have in Murfreesboro, General's Run. The applicants are Blue Sky Construction, but the proposed development is a much smaller scale than what we see at General's Run. The proposed development is called cottages on Clark, and you should have the program book that was curated to you this week and also in your program books, and it consists of 10 dwelling units on 1.2 acres for density of 8.3 dwelling units per acre. None of the units have garages, they're all parking in a parking lot, which does provide the minimum number of parking spaces. During the public hearing for this matter, Planning Commission, there was some good participation, and many of the residents requested relocation of the dumpster and the pavilion that were located on the eastern side of the property. The book's been revised to remove the dumpster to the opposite side where there are no single-family homes, so on the western side of the property, the dumpster's been located, and then the pavilion's been moved further away, it's further away from the single-family homes. You can see that in the program book. The applicants, Representative Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here, and he has a presentation for you over the PRD program book. If you have questions regarding this matter, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. The Planning Commission did have five members present the evening of the public hearing, and all five unanimously recommend that you do approve this zoning change request.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. My name's Clyde Roundtree, with Huddleston Steel Engineering, Chairman Young, and council members. As Margaret Ann mentioned, this has been a project we've gone through the planning process, and as she mentioned, we had some concerns from the surrounding neighborhood, and I just primarily wanted to address those specifically on the plan so you could see how we did address that, so I just brought a hard copy of it in particular. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, prior to meeting with the neighbors and prior to addressing the Planning Commission, we have the pavilion as well as the dumpster on the far end of the property. The neighbor adjacent to the property was the one who was most concerned, asking that we would, if there was any way possible, if we could relocate the dumpster, so we put the dumpster right on the main access on the other side of the property. This is Loveless Photography on this side, so it's a commercial kind of base property. There's also an easement that runs along this property line that gives access to the rear property, so that was an easy concession to make, and Mr. Burns was more than willing to do that. Also, the pavilion was justified further to the eastern property line. We moved that over and found a little niche for it as well, so we feel like we met the concessions that the neighbors really requested in terms of that. We also have a Type C buffer that's going to run around the perimeter of the property. The only other concessions the neighbors were asking for, there's just some concerns were really related to drainage, and we told them that that would be handled during the site planning process. So with that in mind, just very brief presentation, but as far as the architectural character, I was just talking to Mr. Burns about that, it's really very comparable to what he has already developed over at General's Landing, so a consistent architectural character, a lot of what we like to see in the city now with more of a mixed type of product, all masonry, varied roof lines, defined porches, and we feel like it's going to have a really nice presentation from West Clark, or East Clark, excuse me, and especially with the parking being the rear of the property, so it'll keep that kind of residential character that exists and patches along, along East Clark. I'm available for any questions you may have, and I'll be more than happy to answer questions that may come up through the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, are we ready for our public hearing? Okay, we're, Ms. Green, are we ready for our public hearing?
Closest for them.
If you're not familiar with how we conduct our public hearings, we'll invite you to come to the podium and speak for or against. We ask you to speak three minutes, as there may be more speakers. Questions that you have will be answered by staff at the end of the public hearing. Try to keep your comments brief, as we do have several public hearings tonight, and with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone at all want to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Let's not have a rush. Any, anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Questions? Counsel?
I will say that from Planning Commission to tonight, compliments go to Mr. Roundtree on the placement of the dumpster. Much improved. The project itself is a very attractive project. I think it'll be an asset to the neighborhood on that section of Clark Boulevard, and if there's no other questions or comments, I'll move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Call the row please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Our next item pursuant to Resolution 16RPH46 adopted by the City Council on September 26th, except September 22nd, 2016, to conduct a public hearing to consider a plan of services for and annexation of 84 acres and approximately 34.1 acres, which has been proposed to be annexed to the city and rezoning approximately 17.6 acres from General Office OG District to Commercial Fringe CF District located along Old Salem Road. Notice of said public hearings were published in the October 17th, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is to consider the annexation petition and the annexation plan of services for property located along East Overall Creek Road and Old Salem Road. The next public hearing will consider a zoning change request, but this one is for the annexation. And you can see on the map that the yellow area is the current city limits, and it's outlined with the green border, and then the requested area is in orange, and there are three separate requests which are being studied as one study. One is for property located along Old Salem Road, and it's this property, and that is owned by the Rucker Donnell Foundation, and you can see that a portion of the property is already located within Murfreesboro city limits, and they're asking for the rest of their property to be annexed. The second request is by David Alcorn, and it's for the parcel located along East Overall Creek Road, and that property is not completely within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary, a portion of it is, but we've consulted with legal staff, and because a portion of the property's located in the urban growth boundary, we can effectively annex it. And then the third request is for this property located north of East Overall Creek Road, and the applicant is Linda Gilli representing the Talmage Gilli Trust who owns that property. So there are these three separate parcels, all of which have requested annexation, submitted petitions to the city for annexation. We've studied the area and provided a plan of services for the area outlining what services the city can provide, and providing a timeframe for those services. We can provide city services in a timely manner. These properties, and my second map will show you the urban growth boundary, are contiguous with current city limits, ours, two of them are completely within the urban growth boundary, and the third is partially in the urban growth boundary, as I mentioned before. The annexation includes rights of way of Old Salem Road that are contiguous with the study area, and rights of way of East Overall Creek Road. One of the changes that we asked to be made in the plan of services is that the plan of services as a cause for a culvert to be built by the developer, but that's actually something that the city would do in consultation with Mr. Chris Griffith and Mr. Sam Huddleston of the city's engineering department. It is something that the city would do because it's public in nature, and if you need additional information, they'll be glad to give that to you. There has not been a zoning change request for Mr. Alcorn's property or the Linda Gilli's property, but there has been a zoning application made for the Rucker Donnell property, which was the first one I circled. The zoning change request is not the subject of this public hearing. After I sit down, you'll have a public hearing regarding the annexation and annexation petition. After the close of that, I'll come back up and present the zoning change to you, but I just wanted to clarify that this is for the annexation of the property. The other two parcels have no companion zoning change requests. Representatives of the applicants, Mr. Matt Taylor represents the Rucker Donnell Foundation, and he's here if you have questions, but doesn't have a presentation, and Mr. Clyde Roundtree was representing Mr. Alcorn, but Mr. Alcorn's here as well, if you have questions from him. The Planning Commission had five members present the evening of the public hearing, and their recommendation to you is that you do adopt this plan of services and accept the annexation petition. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions, Ms. Green? I got one question. The parcel that is, I'm trying to make sure I'm looking at this right, because the color is here, but, so the, the part that's OG currently, all right, that's blue, is it? Is it, yeah, go right back. So the OG currently, we're going to be looking to rezone that, but my question is, is it the same owner as the dark, darker color, purple?
The purple and blue are the same property with the same ownership. So the parcel, and what's white is actually zone CH, but they're not asking to change the CH zoning request, so the Rucker Donnell Foundation owns a much larger parcel, which is only partially located in the city, and that portion that's in the city is zone CH and OG.
I was just curious why they had not already annexed it, if they already own this part and it's annexed, and then they didn't, is this a creek or something, this little wiggly line?
There is, that's right.
Gotcha.
All right.
Okay, we'll open, we'll open the public, we'll open the public hearing and ask for any comments. Another quote, sorry.
My name is Brady Yallred, and I live on 5871 East Overall Creek Road, and have combined these, they were three separate properties in the Planning Commission, but my concern is that two of the properties, Mr. Alcorn's and the other one, are outside the urban growth boundaries, and I'm sure you're all familiar with how the growth boundaries were set up and so forth by the legislature passing 1101, and so I will go into all that, but there are two ways you can change the urban growth boundaries for a city to annex its property, and I have, I just printed out a couple, and I'm sorry, I don't have enough copies, I didn't print enough, that you can change the urban growth boundaries, and one is by a referendum of the people in that area, affected area. The other is by amending the growth boundaries, and to amend the growth boundaries, you have to convene a coordinating committee, just as convened whenever the growth area was set up by the city. To my knowledge, neither one of these have been done, and the same will go along with the 109 acres that will come up later, that's the Rucker Donnell Foundation property. The city legal department thinks that they can circumvent this by a statement, and I have it printed right here, and I'll read it. They think, this is in the, I think it's in the handbook, annexation handbook, anyway, it's Article 8 on page 560, says, "No provision of this chapter shall prohibit written contracts between municipalities and property owners relative to the exercise of a municipality's right to annex or operate, to invalidate or annex ordinance done pursuant to a written contract between a municipality and a property owner in existence on May 19th, 1998." This is what I told, was told that the legal department says we don't have to go through this process that's prescribed, and to my knowledge, well, at least one of the properties was owned by a neighbor of mine, Mr. James Walker, for 30 years, which, and was recently sold to Mr. Alcorn, and I know he didn't have any contracts, and the Rucker Donnell Foundation wasn't formed until 2010, so they didn't have any written, I'm sure, contracts, so, you know, to me, this is be concerned to you as a governing body of the city, that if this annexation goes through on this, this property, now, the 34 acres, I think on the, that would be the east side of Old Salem Road, it is within the planned growth area, so that would not be in question, but the, on the west side of Old Salem Road is outside, and so if, if you okay this annexation, then you're going to open yourself up to litigation by some plaintiffs that might not agree with it, which I don't, I have several concerns about the whole area, but I'm only going to talk about this one, because I think it pertains to y'all, you know, this will be more concern to you. And I have a couple of things here that I'll, like I say, apologize for not having enough copies, but I'll give this to you, and I also have a legal opinion, have a legal opinion from Attorney General Lawrence that says corridor annexation, or sometimes they call it by different names, but annexing only a strip of highway to make a property contiguous is not legal, and on the 109 acres, which will come up later, I might have to get up and speak on that later, I don't know, I might be speaking out of turn, but that is what they're using to make that property contiguous with the city limits. But anyway, on this, I think if the city, okay, the city and the property owners want this annex, they ought to do it legally rather than, and by what is prescribed with the law, but that is what my comment is, and I hope you'll consider that, because we as citizens have to abide by the law. Hopefully, the government will have to abide by it too. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a small comment here. The, that was the most important and the first thing that the city looked at. The most important thing and what the city looked at when we were doing this is to make sure it is legal. It's been studied, turned inside, outside, upside down by lots of different attorneys from lots of different municipalities, and we think we're in the, in the right. Am I speaking correctly, sir? Okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, a short question.
Is this the portion that you're using to say that it is legal to go about and not have to go through the process?
It is, section...
I just made, just to demonstrate I wasn't getting up and speaking out of my hat. I'm sure you've seen all this before.
We do, we do rely on section A8 of Public Chapter 1101. That's not from an annexation guidebook. That is from the public chapter that set up the urban growth boundaries and the annexation by ordinance within the urban growth boundaries. And there are two separate clauses that you read. We believe that they're separate. And the first one says, "No provision of this chapter shall prohibit written contracts between municipalities and property owners relative to the exercise of a municipality's right of annexation." We have a written application from these property owners and by accepting that and acting on it, as far as I'm concerned, we have a written contract. We will, because our acceptance of that will be a written ordinance that is put in the minutes of the city. There's a second clause, and it says that this provision, none of this, none of 1101 will invalidate an annexation ordinance adopted earlier. Well, that's not the situation we're dealing with. What we're dealing with is a situation that we have a written request from a property owner, from two property owners actually. And my recollection is, Ms. Green, you may have to put the map back up, but I believe that the Gilli property in fact is in the urban growth boundary. Is that correct, Ms. Green?
Yes, sir, the Gilli property is completely in urban growth boundary, as is the Rucker Donnell property, and a portion of the Alcorn property is within the urban growth boundary.
So, on that basis, it's our opinion that the property, that these properties are properly annexed. Also, in the most recent amendments to the annexation laws from, I believe it was 2015, where they establish a process for annexations by resolution, there is a provision in that. It's actually TCA's section 651104 that says, "A resolution to effectuate annexation of property with written consent of the property owner or owners shall not require an, I'm sorry, shall not require a referendum." We're not annexing any property that is not actually petitioned, not only consented to, but petitioned for annexation. We believe we're on solid ground in doing these. And I will say that prior to the planning commission hearing, we met with the county planning department, explained to them what we were looking to do and why we felt we could do it. And it's my understanding, I didn't get a, and this is from the county planning director, is my understanding is the county attorneys looked at this and agreed with us. So we plan to proceed.
On the amendment?
Yep, yep. Okay, we're still in the public hearing mode.
I don't think this is a time for debate. I hear your objection, I understand it. I have given my opinion, I believe it's a solid one. Counsel can accept that, reject it, they can ask for a deferral to further consider it, but I don't believe that a debate would particularly further anything tonight, so. Thank you.
And I got the cart before the horse in this, so most of this is, but we're going to stand with what our attorneys have researched over a long period of time.
I just went by what I could read, what the law stated, and I guess you could make an interpretation of, you know, on anything, just like this, breaking this, which was not separated by a period or anything. It's separated. I guess you could separate, but I just thought that it'd be good to point out to the counsel that you might be opening up something that you might not waste everybody's time there, rather than go through the right process first.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Okay, where are we in this hearing?
Continuing the public hearing.
The public hearing is still open, I believe.
Anyone else would like to speak to this matter?
Good evening, members of the city council and mayor. I'm Audrey Rich and I live at 520 Old Salem Road, still in Rockville. I am making a recommendation for the best use of land on New Salem Highway, currently zoned OG. And that's according to what I received in the mail, and I believe on the map that you had, it was blue. I recommend this portion of the Rucker Donnell property be rezoned to CF. I'm also making the recommendation that the portion of the property that runs along Old Salem Road to be zoned RS15. The portion of Rucker Donnell property that runs along Highway 99 makes sense to be CF since it would be the most likely, be most likely to fall into the growth plan of the urban growth development plan. I am also recommending that the tree line that currently is between the, on your map, blue and purple, you see there's a dotted line there on your map? I don't have that map. I just have what I have. There is a tree line and I believe that's where the creek runs, that that be maintained. This will allow the rural arid ambience that's in that area to be maintained and also allow for commercial development of that piece of property. Regarding the portion of Rucker Donnell property that faces and runs along Old Salem Road, I recommend it be zoned to RS15. My understanding is at one point that was what it was zoned. That portion of the property is directly across the road from my home. The RS15 zoning will be in keeping with the Alcorn-Gilli portion of the zoning for the property to be zoned RS15. My understanding is that they intend to build homes on that property, so having homes in the Old Salem portion would make sense to me as well. All brick, single-family homes with a garage in the back with kids and noises that make, that they make, sitting on a small portion of property, such as the same as mine, is something that I could envision and would be a welcome addition to the parcel subdivision area and certainly in keeping with the rural feel of the neighbors, that the neighbors and I currently enjoy. The Old Salem Road, along with East Overall Creek Road and others frequented by, is frequented by cyclists because it takes them off the highway. So that's what kind of use that it's currently getting. It's also my understanding that there is not a current buyer for that, for the purple portion of the Rucker Donnell property. And so with, and that without a buyer, that, there's not a plan that I know of that they would have in mind to, of what to do with this property. So therefore, I could not say that I would recommend that that portion be also CF because if that is the case, then you open up questions about egress and ingress, and that's a whole nother ball of wax.
Anything else, Ms. Rich?
Pardon?
Anything else?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just reading my notes. It's just that, it's just that I would like, I have no problem with the OG portion being zoned to CF, but I would like the portion that's divided with the tree line and the creek that is there to remain an RS15 area so that homes can be built. I think that's the best use of that, of that piece of property, and it's also keeping with the setting that is there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone at all? Last call. I want to close the public hearing. Counsel?
So can we have somebody talk to us, Margaret Ann, about the, just kind of what the bigger picture idea here is behind, well, sorry, we're talking about annexation, sorry. And so just to explain.
Did I say something wrong? This is all, for me, it all kind of rolls in together.
Yeah, it does, it does for all of us, so no worries, but we'll, can we take those comments towards the zoning piece, you know, because?
Everything she said really should have came on the next.
Yeah, we'll have another public hearing for zoning, but we'll just take your comments for the zoning, okay? Because that's kind of what that was about, and we'll deal with the annexation. I'll ask my question for zoning in a moment.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing and we're ready.
Let me ask one question about annexation, just so I can get it clear in my mind. If a piece, if a property owner requests a piece of property to be annexed and not all of it is within the urban growth boundary, then what we're saying is your understanding of the legal position is that we can still annex even though it's not within our urban growth boundary? If they make the request and it all doesn't fit under the urban growth boundary, we're still able to annex because I always thought the urban growth boundary was a, you know, here's the line in the sand kind of concept.
Well, it's, it may be a line in the sand, but the sand kind of shifts. It's not a line in concrete. And there are at least two ways to change the urban growth boundary, and you, it is possible to annex by a referendum. That might have made sense before this last set of amendments to the annexation laws. I don't think it would make any sense today. But regardless of that, that is still legally a possibility, and we can reconvene, we can ask the county, I think, I'm not sure we have the authority to, I don't think we do, but we can ask the county mayor to reconvene the committee and ask, and look at changing various parts of the urban growth boundary. We have not elected to do that, but there is a provision in that law that, as we read it, allows a person who's outside the urban growth boundary but is contiguous with the city, with property that is inside, well, inside the city, to request annexation and it can be annexed.
So does that shift the urban growth boundary then? Or are we, we have a piece of property that is inside and outside the urban growth boundary?
I guess in effect it ignores the urban growth boundary and annexes the property, which if it's, if it is annexed properly, regardless of what the manner, the manner of that is, if it's done legally, and we believe this will be legally accomplished, then the urban growth boundary for that particular area is kind of moot.
Is it because part of it is already in the urban growth boundary, or is it because it's contiguous to the city that we think it's?
There is a separate provision that says if property, if part of the property is in the urban growth boundary, then the owner can bring all of it, can have all of it annexed. And there is another provision that if they're, if it, even if it's contiguous to property that's in the, in the urban growth boundary and is requested, that it can come in. Now, the urban growth boundary was largely a, as I understand it, a bit before I was here, but I've fought with it and worked with it quite a bit over the last 12 years, but a lot of that was established to say where a city on its own volition could go.
Annex, but this is before the state law shifted that.
Before it changed this last time. And so we, three years ago, would have had the right to annex property right up to the urban growth boundary line, whether that owner liked it or not, and we had done that some in the past. Today, we cannot annex anything, whether inside the urban growth boundary or not, without the property owner's consent. To some extent, as a practical matter, what the legislature did was throw out the urban growth boundary when they amended this, the laws two years ago. Now, they didn't say that and they didn't expressly do it, but as a practical matter, by making, the urban growth boundary really doesn't have a lot of relevance anymore if the only way we can annex is by request or consent.
Well, the only question that I have is that you, when we, this is a contentious thing at the state level and we may end up having to find some type of, it may be litigated at some point in time anyway. And the only ground that we have is the fact that it was requested and it was.
And it's contiguous.
And contiguous, yes, so.
That's a pretty big deal relative to what I think the state law was trying to do, which was basically all based around being requested rather than being annexed when it's not requested. So I think, the contiguous part and getting outside the urban growth boundary is the only part to me that, that we, you know, I just, what would be any kind of a ramification of, I mean, would it just be that if somehow they, the state came back and said, well, you know, that's not what we meant by contiguous, or no, you can't take in the rest even though there's partial, you know, part of it's in? I mean, the ramification would be we would just unannex or, you know, just not be able to charge taxes, or is there any kind of a bad ramification for us if we do it and they come back and say you shouldn't have?
Isn't this just kind of a quasi-effect of what took place with the legislature though? Because basically, and I think you've already said this, is the urban growth boundary used to be the controlling factor of where we could annex to. And it was either opposed or unopposed, but we could annex to that line. When the legislature deemed that we can no longer do that and stopped forced annexation, basically they did away with that line because now that line is irrelevant because if we can't annex to it, then that line means nothing anymore in the sense that.
I would agree with that.
With an interpretation of saying that was our boundary line to say that we couldn't go any further, if, if now everything is on a voluntary basis and says we are requesting to be annexed, then basically a city could grow as far as they wanted to beyond that line as long as it was voluntary annexation and it was contiguous.
And the city would have a choice, and we also do have the obligation to do a feasibility study and determine whether or not we can provide public services to those properties. And we still do have, except for Williamson County, we do have the requirement of it being contiguous. And I, there has been discussion of that being, non-contiguous annexations being allowed for other counties, but I wouldn't have any idea where if that's going to come back up again this year or what will happen if it does. But regardless of that, we don't have that possibility of doing that unless it is contiguous, and then we need to make the decision that we can, can provide services. And if this does go forward and then any kind of development begins, we need to be, to be able to provide those services. There are provisions in the, in the plan of services rules that if we fail to provide the services that we say we're going to provide, then there is an ability, you know, there's penalties against us about doing future annexations. The, you know, because if, it's impossible to predict the course of litigation, and this would be someone wanting to plow some new ground, and that's a possibility. I would suspect, if I were the developer and a suit was filed, I think I would probably hold off my development plans, but I can't say that they would, they might decide to go forward anyway. I really think that the result to the city, the negative result to the city might be that someone to declare that annexation's void and ineffective, so we, it didn't happen. If we've collected money for city taxes at that time, we'd probably owe it back.
I got you. No other, I mean, I just can't think of a big significant risk, that's what I was trying to, is there some other, if you get, if you?
No other, I mean, I just can't think of a big significant risk, that's what I was trying to say, is there some other, if you get, if you...
I'm not aware of any other penalty that would come along with us, with, with a negative finding or an adverse finding, I'm not aware of any kind of penalty that would be...
Okay.
Has there been any more, this is a March 6, 2000 opinion from the Attorney General that was provided this evening. Is there anything more current from the Attorney General on, on this kind of a question?
I am not certain about that. I know that these have been done as described in here, and as he described it, that it was not proper, I know they have been done. So I'm, but I'm not aware of a later Attorney General opinion.
It might be at some, I mean, it might be prudent at some time to ask that question. I mean, this is, this is, you know, to unravel the, the sweater after it's been knitted is, is, is pretty complicated, and I don't know that it might not be a good idea to ask the question before, if it's just sitting there, and, and if, if we are saying it extensively dissolves the urban growth boundary, then we've referred to the urban growth boundary. I mean, my, my point is this. What we, I think our responsibility is to provide reasonable expectation for property owners and for developers, for people willing to make money and to want to know what they're going to have across the road from them. And we've referred to in our 2035 plan and in other documents, we've referred to the urban growth boundary. Well, if it's extensively done away with that, and that there is nothing as far as reasonable expectations, that the, that compels us to consider the urban growth boundary, then, I mean, that's fine, I mean, that's, if that's the opinion, and that clears, clears away that as a, as a, something that people can depend upon, or can, you know, bank on, or that we need to be controlled by, then, then that needs, to me, that needs to be cleared up, as opposed to just sitting out there and making an assumption from a municipality standpoint that this is the way we're going to consider it. I, I would like to see something a little firmer, even though it's just, I mean, I understand the logic, and I agree with the logic, it's contiguous, we provide, and we do a great job of this, but this gets confusing at the state level. We've already seen that, we've seen that litigated, and, you know, it's still in flux, I know, at the state level to some degree because of people that haven't done the competent job of annexation that I think our municipality has. But this question, to me, just, there, there's just a little something in my throat that, that keeps me from saying we don't need to ask a few more questions about this. All I can say.
We're still in the public hearing mode, is there any other comments?
No.
It's hard not to lose track.
The, I, I just personally don't see that the city is taking a lot of risk on this, though, because, I mean, the worst-case scenario would be the refunding and the inability to provide services to those people that, the developer who would say that he was going to develop it. I think the developer would be at significant risk if he were to build it, especially if there was pending litigation coming. So I, I don't think the risk is, is really on the city's part. I do think he's met the criteria, I trust our legal opinion and, and our staff, and I'm going to move for approval for the annexation.
Excuse me.
The plan of services.
The plan of services.
Plan of services.
And we do need to have separate resolutions for that, I missed, they were both considered together a week ago, or a meeting ago, but they shouldn't be, there, there should be a separate resolution, number one, to approve the plan of services, if that is approved, then number two, to consider and approve the annexation.
My motion is for the plan of services.
Second.
A motion to second, Ms. Wright, would you?
So for clarification, this is Resolution 16RPS-46.
Thank you, correct.
PH-46, okay. Number 11.
Number 11B.
11B.
11B, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Wright, would you please call the room?
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. All right, now, our next item.
Consider for annex.
C.
C, all right, which is?
Consider for adoption.
Consider the adoption of the annexation.
Yeah, tanx.
Two annex.
I'll make the motion to approve the item 16R-A-46 for annexation.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second.
I'm gonna just say, I mean, I think because it's contiguous, and/or, at least in this case, my understanding is that some part of all three of these parcels is within the urban growth boundary. Am I seeing that correctly? That some portion of it is in the urban growth boundary? You know, I'm going to support it because at least some of the property, and I, my, my expectation of this particular piece is that, you know, look, if I owned a piece of property, and the urban growth boundary happened to cut straight across half of it, that it would, should include my whole property, particularly if I come to the city and ask for it to be annexed, okay? So I mean, I'm going to support it for that reason, in this particular section, so.
And to follow up on that, Mr. LaLance, legal's been working on this two and a half years, but long before you got here, sir, and, and I think the hard work that's been done reinforces our decision tonight.
There are, but there are philosophical situations. I mean, you start tampering with something that's been around and been set in stone for a long time. I got, I say, I have the same little, little kind of lump in my throat, too, about this, but since part of all the property is in it, I'm going to go along with this one, so.
Well, and then let me clarify my position, too, so that I understand. I agree with the logic, and I think we're consistent with that, but I want the question to be continued on the plate, so I'm going to do just the opposite vote, just, just because I want to keep it before us, so that we, we, we maybe pursue a little clarification as far as this, and it's not because I necessarily disagree that this is a good idea, I just want to keep it before us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shacklet. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Wright, would you please call the room?
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland. I'm sorry. It's already written down.
I know.
He'll be glad to know our call.
How quickly they...
Our motion passes. Ms. Green, get us out of this, take us out of here.
Sir, then, we're going to hold another public hearing on the matter of the zoning change request. I alluded to that in my presentation for the annexation request, and in just a moment, I'll have a map available for you. Okay, here it is. You have before you a request to rezone property that shaded purple and blue on the map before you. The properties that are orange, the Talmage property and Alcorn property, do not have a zoning change request. If they have not requested a zoning change, then they come into the city with an interim zoning of RS-15, that single-family residential district, and it allows a, by right, the development of single-family homes that are at least 15,000 square feet, and that suits their purposes just fine, so they've not requested a change to the zoning. But I put them on here so that you would be able to see them. There's a much larger property owned by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation that is, well, white's not a good color, is it? And, that I've just outlined in the white color, and that property is partially within city limits, and then a portion of it you just studied for annexation and ended to approve the annexation in the previous agenda item. The property, that property that is owned by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation is ZONE CH along Highway 99, New Salem Highway, that's currently in the city, and that's Commercial Highway District. The blue portion is ZONE OG, and that's General Office District, and of course, the purple area is the area that was just considered for annexation. The request is not to change the CH zoning that currently exists, but it is for you to consider rezoning the 17.6 acres, that's blue, from OG to CF, Commercial Fringe District. They decided to not request CH, but to request CF instead. The request is also to zone the purple area, the 34.1 acres, to CF simultaneous with annexation. So the total area being requested to be zoned to CF is 51.7 acres. The CF district does permit a variety of commercial uses. I've included a chart in the agenda materials that identifies uses permitted in the Office General Zone, Commercial Highway Zone, and the Commercial Fringe District for your reference, if you were curious as to what would be permitted. We expected development to happen in this area several years ago. The city extended sewer down along this area to serve some county schools, and we set up a sewer assessment district where we expected the development to pay back the cost that the city incurred for providing that sewer. And because of that, we embarked on the Salem Pike Study Area, and what I have before you now is the Salem Pike Study Area land, future land use map, and this is what we have to go by until our comprehensive plan is adopted by the City Council, which of course hasn't been done yet. On the map, I have outlined the area that we're looking at, and with the red bubble, it's here, and that property is identified to be mixed-use limited-plan development, and the plan calls for that to be medium and high-density residential, so it would be three to eight dwelling units per acre, or greater than eight dwelling units per acre, or institutional or offices, or, and of course, general farming would be permitted. So the land use plan for the Salem Pike Study identifies this as a mixed-use limited-plan development. The, and so the zoning change request would not be inconsistent with that land use plan. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and their recommendation to you is that you approve the zoning change request, and there were five members present, and that, that was made unanimously. Mr. Matt Taylor represents the applicants, and I think he has just a few words to say before the public hearing. If you have any questions, either before or after the public hearing, I'd be glad to answer them. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Good evening, Vice Mayor Young, and members of the council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Harney, who represents the Ruckert Donnell Foundation, and do have just a few words before we open the public hearing. For some of you that may not know or familiar with the Ruckert Donnell Foundation, it was established several years ago by the inheritance of this land and several hundred acres across the street and further south of here, whenever Mr. Donnell passed away. The foundation was established to meet the needs in the education on civic arenas of our community. However, the only real asset that they inherited was the land itself. And they are burdened or commissioned with the, with the stab, with putting back forth so much of that asset back into the community each year. So in order to make the most impact and realize their most potential within the community, they need to seek to zone their property in an appropriate manner to not only the area itself, but also to maximize their asset. So we've requested this to be CF, to allow for this particular property to fully meet the neighborhood services needs of the surrounding area, as well as the southwest portion of the city and the county as a whole. And myself or Mr. Harney will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
I got a question for you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you help, is there, I'm looking at this, I can't really make sense of, so first of all, what's already annexed is Commercial Highway, right next to Highway 99, correct?
Yes, sir.
To the north, and so when this was originally done, did, they went up the creek bank and they went, okay, we're going to basically cut this line through it, and we're going to do Commercial Highway that's some distance away from 99, and then everything else, we're going to do OG. Why is that OG right there?
That was...
Any history that you can?
I, I don't remember exactly why we zoned that OG, except, you know, we, we kind of cut, I think it was about a 300-foot swath along New Salem, that sounds about like the distance we would have cut to be CH, and then just left the rest as OG is an interim transitional zone, until we came back with a zoning application or annexation on, on the rest of the property.
Any other comments from counsel before we open the public hearing? Okay, hearing done, we'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to come forward to speak for or against this matter.
What I'm trying to figure out is, Mr. Taylor, the, when I look at this map, where is the creek and the tree line?
That is, okay, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so, yeah, I'm going to stick with what I said earlier. The portion OG to CF, I don't have a problem with that, as long as that tree line is maintained. But I do think it's still best to keep the purple portion, not CF, rather have single-family homes in that area, because like I said, there are homes directly across from that, one of it be mine.
Yes, ma'am, folksy.
And the others, an RS-15 would also be in keeping with what is proposed for the Alcorn property, and that makes sense to me. So if I may, I'd like to ask a question, and you can answer it later at the end, I understand. If you do decide to change the zoning for all of this property to CF, will the current residents, meaning myself and those who live right there around me, be allowed to meet with the developer so that we can discuss what is going to be potentially proposed for that area, to see whether or not that would be something that we would agree with or disagree with? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Comment? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Rich, I'm going to answer your question for you. You have the right as a private citizen to meet with city staff, and they will be very cooperative to help you understand this, and this is for anyone. You also have the right, and I know the, the engineering firm, Mr. Taylor, would be also glad to sit down with you and explain to you the questions that you have. This is the way we get a lot of things done. People don't know, sometimes they're confusing. So I would suggest Mr. Taylor will give you his card, and that you can have a wonderful conversation with him, and you can also have a wonderful conversation with the city staff. I think you will find him very cooperative and eager to answer your questions on what will affect you and your neighbors if this happens. Any other comments from the?
I, no, not, not real pertinent to our question, but my interpretation of the urban growth boundary, the map that we had up earlier, sounds like, the reason I asked about the OG is because it sounds to me like what the, the plan says and lays out for this area lines up significantly closer to OG than it does to Commercial Fringe for this piece of property right here. It, and so, my guess is that the reason it's OG is because that's what it sounds like. I mean, you know, you're not going to have medium-density housing, mixed-use in Commercial Fringe, I mean, you know, that's, to me, Commercial Fringe is significantly different than medium-density residential slash mixed-use, which was what was called for in the plan. OG sounds a little closer based on what this, you know, our chart says, what's available and allowed and what's not. So to me, it sounds like OG would be a much better use, and you are going, you know, we're pretty far off the highway now, and going to be adjacent to RS-15 on at least one or two sides that's now in the city. Is OG closer than what, what the map calls for, I mean, mixed-use?
OG would be consistent... OG would be consistent, but CF is not inconsistent either. We do have a mixed-use zone in Murfreesboro, but it's only in the gateway because the gateway has some architectural standards that we don't yet have that apply to the rest of the city. But CF is not inconsistent with what the Salem Pike Study recommends. Single families, 15,000 square foot lots isn't more inconsistent than either OG or CF because those aren't part of the medium or high-density residential. The, it's my recollection, and this zoning change was requested either in 2013 or '14, and at that time, it was with a property across the street as well. They used some topography just to make boundaries, and we're looking at selling some property to get rid of it for the foundation. Mr. Harney was involved in the application. It's my recollection, they said OG just because they really didn't know what to say, and OG tends to be something that is less controversial. Although I'll say, as somebody who administers the zoning map, the OG district sounds great, but it's, we all want offices, but it's oftentimes, you don't have anybody who wants to go there. We have properties that have been zoned OG on Memorial Boulevard for 20 years and nothing's happened. OG is just a difficult zone. I, it's something that I like, especially in transition near a single family, but it, practically speaking, it's hard to get anybody in an OG zone, maybe because the use of permitted, of course, it's your decision whether you think CF or OG is more appropriate, but I think they both are appropriate. If I misremember, maybe Mr. Harney can provide additional information about the OG request.
To answer your question...
Your name, sir?
John Harney. I'm here representing the Rucker Donnell Foundation along with Mr. Taylor. At the time, we made the request for the bigger Rucker Donnell property, we did look at the land use plan that we just looked at. What we failed to sort of take a look at was some of the floodplain issues and some of the things that went along with this side of the road where the creek is. After going back and looking at it more recently about what likely will happen up and down New Salem Highway, because of the amount of floodplain that's in that OG sliver that would be on, I guess, Matt, would that be on the, the south side? What we realized is the likelihood of a commercial development going on Salem Highway probably means you're going to have parking back in that area next to the creek. Well, if you're doing a commercial property on New Salem Highway and you're using parking that's in OG, but it benefits commercial, then we could be in a situation where we're sort of violating the two zoning lines. So our reason for asking for CF all the way to the creek was because we want to be consistent with whatever use. It's a narrow gap in there, and it's got floodplain on both sides of that creek. So that was the reason we thought it was probably looking at the actual probable development of the property that it made sense to be CF. And in talking with staff, we said, okay, if it's a mixed-use, we'd ask for that whole corridor through there to be CF. Now to stand here and tell you what's going to happen on that property two years from now or 15 years from now, I'm not smart enough to tell you that, or I think at this time we don't know for sure. We wanted to give as much flexibility as possible for this area because what we do know with the amount of floodplain in there, it is going to be expensive to develop it because we've got to deal with the floodplain. Therefore, a good portion of it will have to be left alone because of floodway and what little area we can do any work on in the 100-year floodplain. We still have to, and have talked with staff about the fact, because of the drainage issues that go all up and down that creek, we know we've got to be a good steward in working with the city and the surrounding areas to make sure whatever we do is smart from a drainage standpoint, where we don't negatively impact the other property owners around us. Any more questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Harney.
Well, let me ask one question, Mr. Harney, because, you know, I've heard several times when, when you have a question mark when you're trying to rezone, and you don't know, and developers can't answer the question, what's going to buy, and what's going to sell, and what's going to be here, and property owners can't see what's going to happen. But one thing about, I've seen Mr. Harney and his company do several times is to keep the public informed as to what's going in there, or what might be what's on the table. Is there any kind of assurance, or is there any kind of, I guess, to help belay some of her concerns about, will they have some type of information? I know Mr. Young said that they could come and talk to Mr. Taylor and all, but, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you could, I'm just trying to get something that they could hang their hat on and be assured that it's not going to be something terribly. I mean, the issue was to try to buffer it some way from their residential property, and that's, I know you're concerned about that, too, in several areas you've been sensitive to that, so...
Well, anything that happens on this property down the road, if this only goes through, we've got to come back with site plan approval with the city. And part of that is looking at buffering, which is certainly, I think, in the control of the planning commission. This foundation is to benefit the greater community. And as far as, is, I think the people on, that are the directors of the foundation, and as long as I stay involved, we're certainly going to listen to the surrounding community. And I think the planning commission, as part of their job in looking at site plans, is looking at buffering and setbacks and those things that I think as the city progressively grows, those restrictions have actually gotten more intense, or at least are scrutinized more. And we're certainly going to be, not going to be opposed to meeting with anyone and being transparent about what, what, you know, comes down the pike. Now, when that comes remains to be seen. I, you know, it may still be a while, but we're trying to position this to have the most flexibility for what may happen in the future.
I'll say from a planning commission standpoint, I know we regularly deal with Mr. Taylor and Mr. Harney, and they have always done, since, since I've worked with them, they have always done exactly what they told me they would do, and they have never let me down. And so therefore, I've probably got more confidence in them than the neighbor who lives next door to them because they don't have that engagement. I've continuously also seen, as a planning commission member, us regularly use commercial fringe as a buffer between commercial highway and residential areas, and that's a typical practice for us, so we're not doing anything out of the ordinary here. When you're looking at this particular piece of property where we're dealing with the floodplain, it's going to be extremely difficult to use it for much else than parking. From my perspective and past experience, it looks to me like it'll be primarily be used for an asset to the commercial highway property, but it, I really can't see a huge amount of development going on because of the amount of floodplain that's on the property. So I'm, I'm really comfortable with the CF zoning on this property. I think it not only historically has been a very comfortable buffer, but I also think that because of the foundation that's doing it and what their intents are, I do think that they'll continue to be a good steward of managing the property. And I think the intention is to certainly develop the property so it's most advantageous to the service that they're trying to provide, but it's also responsible planning is the way it's presented.
Has Old Salem Road been improved? Anybody, anybody know the status?
Not beyond Veterans Parkway.
So the only kind of thing that, the two, the only two things that don't connect with me really here, I mean, you know, here's the deal, we got, commercial fringe, as Mr. Harney said, that kind of opens up more flexibility, which means a lot more things can come in there. That, that means it's open to a lot more choices, which I understand the reasoning behind that. If it was my land, I'd probably want that, too, so I understand that. I'm just kind of curious, if we do, on, on the floodplain issue, I think what he was talking about was actually the south side of the creek for parking. The north side of the creek, which actually comes up to Old Salem Road, I think is going to be certainly possible to have all of this in commercial property. You know, the, the, along Old Salem.
Parking next to the floodplain.
Well, yeah, you got to park, but then you'll be, your parking will be south of your, of your, you know, your store, right, or whatever it is. So there's still going to be enough to put commercial buildings along Old Salem Road and park behind or park in front?
There, there will be. It is much more narrow or shallow, I will say, than the 99 side of this property. And, and because of that, and the water quality buffers along the stream that will make us keep that tree line intact and that floodplain, we anticipate this side to be smaller, service-oriented type commercial. They're not going to be your big boxes, but some of those service-oriented natures are not allowed in OG. And that's why, you know, and those service-oriented providers are very low-impact in nature generally. You're not talking fast food restaurants, you're not talking high-turnover areas.
All right. I'll correct my statement to Rick a while ago. I told him that 99 hadn't been improved through this section, if you, if those who...
Old Salem.
Well, Old Salem, yeah. Old Salem, it used to be the highway, and, and that section of road was a roller coaster ride, so, but Highway 99 has seen significant improvement over the past few years.
I was talking about Old Salem. And hopefully more, with more improvements.
We close the public hearing, Ms. Wright?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. We're ready for a motion.
Move for approval as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, would you please call the floor?
Ms. Gels Harris, Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is, what is our next item? Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Young, and members of the city council. Our next item is item 12, a annexation and zoning request located along New Salem Highway. It's the area on the map colored in blue before you. It's, property itself is a little over 106 acres, and we have included in the annexation plan of services 3.3 acres of New Salem Highway right-of-way, for a total of 109.5 acres total. Property is not by itself contiguous with the existing city limits. As you can see, the right-of-way that's been included in the annexation actually works to connect the parcel with the existing city limits to make it contiguous. And our legal staff has opined that, that that is not an issue, and that we are on solid ground with regards to that as well, and that was referenced in a previous public hearing, questioning whether or not that was permissible. But our legal staff has studied that, as well as the issue of it being outside of the urban growth boundary. This parcel is entirely located outside of the urban growth boundary, but as we discussed in the last annexation, our legal staff feels that, that it is permissible for the city to consider the annexation of this property. We are considering the annexation plan of services and the annexation petition. Plan of services is in your agenda packet. It details that the city will be able to provide services upon annexation of this property, which, which is currently vacant. The zoning is the next item on the agenda. Even though this property is outside the urban growth boundary, there's actually sewer running right through the middle of it, so it's, sewer is readily available to serve the property for the proposed development. We need to conduct a public hearing on the annexation petition and plan of services. Item B is with regards to the plan of services. You'll need to consider a resolution in item B regarding the plan of services, and the resolution separately in item C for the annexation petition. Then I'll come back up for D to present the zoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the, the annexation petition or plan of services. And Mr. Taylor is here, representing the Rucker Donnell Foundation. This is another piece of property that's, that's owned by the Rucker Donnell Foundation, just like in the last public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Blomley? Hearing none, I guess we need to conduct our public hearing.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to conduct a public hearing on this particular item. We'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to come and speak for or against this. This is the annexation segment.
And plan of services.
Plan of services. Come, sir.
Well, I'm back again, and named Brady already, live on Overall Creek Road. This property touches my property, and so I have a special concern about it. But my concern is, it's not contiguous with the city. You're using a roadway which, by all the interpretations that I could find from the Attorney General, it, it can't be used a roadway by itself because it does not annex people, property, commercial, business, or whatever. And it has, it would have to be contiguous to, to qualify for annexation simply because it's outside the growth boundaries also. I'll make it short because I know the meeting is getting long, but that's, that's my problem with it. And also the zoning. I've read that agriculture or rural land that is annexed should be at a low-density zoning. Well, a low-density probably would be R-15 instead of R-10 or lower. So I hope you would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
Plan of services, yeah.
Anyone else at all? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Order the wishes of the council on the plan of services.
Ditto on the same comment, it's just a little clearer, just for plan of services here.
But it's annexation and the plan of services.
I think it, is it that correct? That's the resolution?
First, our resolution should address the plan of services.
Correct us, please.
Yeah, item B is the next item, which is, which is just regarding the plan of services. Then item C will be with regards to the annexation petition.
So all we're going to be calling for a motion or a second is whether or not we can provide plan of services.
Whether you approve the plan of services as, as proposed.
I will move for approval of 16R PS 47 adoption for plan of services.
Second.
Have a motion in second on the floor. Ms. Wright, would you please call the floor?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. What was?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Four to two pass. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Public hearing.
Okay, yeah, okay. That, that motion passed, now we're going to move to the annexation public hearing. Is that correct?
Right.
All right. We'll open the floor. It's already been done.
That was saying public hearing.
Okay.
Twelve C.
And now we're on C.
Twelve C.
And...
Mm-hmm, twelve C.
Consider for adoption, resolution to annex approximately 109.5 acres located along New Salem Highway to incorporate the same within corporate boundaries of the city limits of Murfreesboro, Rucker Donnell Foundation applicant.
Should we have a discussion first?
Yes.
So here's, here's, here's my only issue with this, is that if we just got through saying that it has to be... if we just got through saying that it has to be contiguous or partially in the urban growth boundary, and I already had a little lump in my throat about that, that we would annex the road out to get to a spot so that we can annex it, so that we could say it's contiguous, is putting a really big lump in my throat. And I just can't imagine that that is something that, I mean, you know, I'm gonna struggle to support it. You know, I'll just end it, I'll just stop my comments there, but that's it.
I understand Rick's opinion, I really do. The only thing is, two years ago, the state legislature said that you cannot have forced annexation because it would make sense to take the property between this property and city limits and provide them services as well. We can't do that any longer, so we are continuously, we never have a planning commission meeting now where we don't draw a 10-foot boundary between properties to create, to prevent creating an island, or draw a spider leg to connect a piece of property so that it's, we don't create a donut hole. And so, we're continuously drawing these lines now. This is part of checkerboard annexation, which is something that we have to accept with the current ordinances that we're given to operate within. And it's difficult to understand, and I understand why Rick's saying exactly what he's saying, but that's what the state has put us in the position of doing. And so, I understand why we're doing it completely from the planning side of it. And there's nothing at all that's out of the ordinary of what we're asking to be done here.
And my comment would be in the law, in the best interest of the city, this property needs to be in the city. We need to develop to city standards, we need to develop city roads, streets, and we can provide the services. Eight years from now, I'd hate to think that this was a county subdivision in the middle of an island around the city with lesser services and lesser opportunities for the neighbors and the families out there. We didn't deal this hand to us, we were dealt this hand. And we need to make the best that you can. Rick's right in a lot of ways, Eddie's on course. It's not a good situation in some ways, but I truly feel that the best interest of the city is to bring this property into the city.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, I don't really dispute that. I mean, I don't dispute that at all. I think that clearly we're gonna offer the best, you know, the best thing for the city or for the piece of property. I'm just questioning whether or not the reasoning for us to be able to do this still applies if we have to take the road in to get out there. So, it's just a combination of not only, not only just the spider-leg annexation, but the spider-leg annexation combined with the urban growth boundary issue has got me a little, I mean, clearly, look, I want it in the city. I mean, this is what's kinda weird, I mean, I'm just, and they wanna be in the city. I mean, I'm just in...
That's what makes the big difference right there.
I'm worried, though, you know, from a precedent standpoint and a bigger-picture standpoint, whether or not we're opening up a can of worms to say, you know, how far out are we gonna go? And I guess we could always say the plan of services wouldn't work, but how long does a spider leg run?
That's a good point. The plan of services will work, and in certain instances, the city has to say, no, we cannot provide those services.
If it's too far.
And we do that. But in this particular case, we can provide the services.
I'll probably hold off on this one, but it's, I might just back out on that one.
Let me see if I can, I'm like Rick, had the same issue. This is a little bit more obvious, that we're stretching a point. And I understand why we're stretching a point. Everything anyone says is about this needs to be in the city, it needs to have the services of the city, it needs to develop as a city subdivision. Our point at the state, we're gonna talk about how unique our situation is as it relates to state legislation, related to annexation, that we and Udoa aren't necessarily the same thing. And what, our point, when we simply try to make a way around the law, doesn't, is not the ethical way for us to make our point, to me. We are getting around the law because we need to, I understand that. But to me, that's not the right position for us to argue. When we go to the state and say, a municipality such as Murfreesboro, who does it right, provides plans of services and provides those services, doesn't annex just to get tax dollars? To make our case, we need to be not just making a way where there is no way. We need to set the ethical standard for how we do this and let the legislature provide us with the tools, the legal tools, to do it right. If it is an exception for growth communities that do it right, then let's make our case from that high ground as opposed to figuring out how to make it work by this kind of annexation, and making our point because, well, we just had to do it. I'm just a little uncomfortable with us finding ways to get around the state law because we just have to, because we're a growth area, and it is for the good of our community. I think there's a different kind of high ground that we can take. It will postpone some of the development and some of the annexation, but let's make that point. We talked about going to the state and making our point about how unique those communities, and there are others with us in that same struggle, that are growth areas in our communities, that are, that state legislation does not serve well. And I think we need to make our case, and we can do it from the moral high ground as opposed to just, well, let's make it work. Let's make it work by going out and doing what we're doing in this case, and maybe even in like the other case. It'll happen, but give us the legal tools and have them answered at the state level so that we just don't look like we're trying to work, we're trying to make a workaround workaround the state legislation so that it can allow us to continue to do what we wanna do and what is in the best interest of our community. We can make that point. Now, you can say, we can go ahead and do it, and then make our point that we had to do this, and look in the rearview mirror and say, we had to do this because this is what was the right thing to do. But you look at that differently when you're trying to create legislation and an opinion. To me, you do, anyway, you make a different, when you did this just to make it work as opposed to, we were waiting to come up, give us the tools that we needed to do to be the growth community that we are, and to do it in a proper manner. But, I mean, that's my point.
Bill, I don't wanna stretch this out, but there is no telling how many times the county mayor, the city mayor, the city manager, the mayor of Smyrna have gone to the state legislature, and they've all looked us straight in the eye and told us they're gonna help us out. And I've seen zero help out. I understand your approach, it is correct. But you can't say, well, let's make sure that the right fire department comes when my house is burning down.
And I guess to add to that, I mean, the legislation that was passed two years ago, if it were challenged, I'd say it would be unconstitutionally vague because it has so many restrictions in it as far as people voting on whether or not you can annex an area. When you get down, clearly, these people are saying, we want our property annexed. So, there's no question here. But if that were not the case, the question would be, who would, who in that area would be allowed to vote? Would it be the property owners? Would it be the people who live in that area? Would it be the people who surround that area? Would it be the entire town? And that's never been clarified. I mean, so, I just don't think that there's, the bill was written with enough accuracy that you could go back and say, that bill is something that we absolutely need to observe and not try to work with what it is they've given us. So, and that's what they gave us, so we have to, as far as legislation, that's what we have to work with.
Yeah, Mr. Ives. Yeah, someone mentioned in a public hearing that there was some, something in the law somewhere in our state that they, that was against annexing a road just to get it contiguous. Are we familiar with anything like, does that exist at all?
I have, I have read that the Attorney General opinion that was provided tonight, I haven't stated it recently, and I do believe that what we're proposing here fits. If, we also could, and an alternative would be to defer this, and let me come back with, let me look at that and come back with a discussion about it.
We don't have to have a public hearing.
No, we defer, do we?
No, we don't need to. We don't have to have a public. You don't want to?
No.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion, but let me make a comment. I understand what everyone's saying, but I also understand, as a former planning commissioner, a couple of years ago, we were annexing people that didn't wanna be annexed. We've got somebody right here that wants to be annexed. That's a big difference. And as I make this motion to approve this annexation, I think we gotta be cognizant of moving forward. We're not gonna make the best decision. We try to make the best decision for what's best for Murfreesboro, but we're not gonna make everybody happy. And as our city continues to grow, and we're gonna grow, we just gotta be cognizant, what's best for Murfreesboro the right way? And I think we've done it the right way the last couple of years. And I think we're continuing to do it the right way. So, I make the motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, please.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
I'm staying.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next item is 12D, is that where we are? Mr. Blomley.
Have both the motions for B and C been?
They both passed.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item, item D, is with the, with respect to item D, which is the zoning of the same property that we just considered. The Rucker Donnell Foundation has made a request for RS-10 zoning, single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. That is one of the three least-dense, single-family zoning districts in the city, minimum 10,000 square foot lot size. Property being a little over 106 acres. Staff calculates that under the RS-10 zone, if there were no environmental constraints on the property, that approximately 350 single-family residential lots could be developed. Under the RS-15 zone, which would be the interim zone if there was no zoning request, staff calculates about 230 lots. But one thing that Mr. Taylor did mention during the planning commission public hearing is that there are some environmental constraints on the property that would make a significant portion of the property questionable as to whether it could be developed, which could end up significantly reducing the lot yield on the property. The property is adjacent primarily to large agricultural or single-family residential tracts. There are some single-family residential subdivisions in the unincorporated county, both on the east and west sides of New Salem Highway, as well as some commercial uses. There's a Dollar General retail center directly across the street. If the property were annexed without a zoning request, it would come in with an RS-15 zone, and they've requested RS-10. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter and unanimously recommended approval. We'll note that this is just outside the limits of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, so there's no land use recommendation for this property from the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything that you would like to add? I believe Mr. Taylor has a word or two before the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I'm Matt Taylor again from SEC. As Mr. Blomley indicated, there are some environmental concerns or constraints on the property. The rear of the property, the western leg of the property, becomes extremely steep. It is also very rocky, and so we have discounted that as basically undevelopable land. And then we have a large drainage area that drains from the south to the north, back to Puckett Creek. This makes the eastern third of the property, which is very low-lying and flat, near impossible to develop economically. We've looked at some concept plans recently, and estimate that we, we're estimating about a 200 lot yield off this property, so about two to the acre, which is a very low density. RS-15 would develop something similar to that if it did not have the, these physical constraints on the property. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after.
So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna conduct a public hearing on the zoning of this property at this time. Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone to come step forward and speak for or against the zoning of this particular piece of property.
Okay, so, we've got my place that's on Old Salem Road, and I'm still in Rockville, I think. Across the street from me is gonna be Murfreesboro, is that correct? Just annex that in. I guess that end of Old Salem Road that connects to 99, that will be Murfreesboro. And then skip a few houses, and then that's in Rockville, and then we've got this property here that you just annexed, and now you wanna build a bunch of homes on it. Skip a piece of property after that, same side of the road, and then you've got Rockville Elementary. So, I understand that some of that property cannot be developed. I would still recommend an RS-15 instead of a RS-10 so we can keep with the larger lots in that area, instead of getting everybody kinda all bunched up together. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Ritz.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. LaLance, I think you had a comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, well, that's...
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Our next item is 13, I hope. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. Item 13 is with respect to the annexation and the zoning of property located along the east side of Barfield Road. I'll put the map for you here. It's the property colored in orange on the map. It's about, property that's been requested is about 15 acres. However, with city property that we've added onto it at Mr. Ives' request, we've more than doubled the size of the study area. You see the blue area labeled as additional study area. You see it kind of runs along the river and all that city-owned property, and that's because that's the Stones River Greenway that runs along the west fork of the Stones River. We've acquired all those properties over the course of the last number of years for the extension of the greenway, and it only makes sense in the city's eyes to annex that property as well since we own it, so that we can control it not only by ownership but by jurisdiction as well, and so that we can provide services to the greenway along that, along that property. This property is inside the urban growth boundary, so... So, that is, that is not in question. It is definitely inside the urban growth boundary. Property owner has petitioned the city for annexation, and with the annexation of the, of the city-owned property to the rear, it is contiguous with the existing city limits. And as you'll notice in the packet, Mayor McFarland did sign an annexation petition requesting that those properties be annexed at staff's request. We've also included the right-of-way of Barfield Road, right in front of the subject property. The annexation plan of services is in the agenda packet before you... The annexation plan of services is in the agenda packet before you. The annexation plan of services shows that the city would be able to provide services, services to this property upon annexation. Sewer actually runs both to the front side and rear of the property, so sewer is readily available, and all other services will be readily available to the subject property as well. Property is vacant, so there are no structures that would need to be served immediately upon annexation. The next item on the agenda after the public hearing is item B, which is the, uh, the resolution for the plan of services for all property, including the city's eight parcels and the, uh, and Mr. Petty's property. And item C will be the separate resolution on the annexation petition itself. And then I'll come back, come back up once again for item D for the presentation on the zoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the annexation or the plan of services.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Blimley. With that, we'll open the public hearing on the plan of services for the annexation of approximately 32.8 acres located along Barfield Road. Anyone like to speak for or against this, please step forward. Don't rush. Last call, anyone would like to speak? We're gonna close the public hearing.
I move we approve the recommendation for plan of services.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor. Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye. Mr. Blimley, you coming back up or?
We need to number C for the annexation.
Okay. Right. Considered adoption of the resolution 16 RA 45 to annex approximately 32.8 acres located along Barfield Road to incorporate the same with the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Mr. Ted Petty, applicant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye. Our next item is to have Ms. Blimley explain what we're gonna do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. Item D is, uh, with respect to the zoning of the same property. Mr. Tom Reed has a contract on the subject property. Mr. Ted Petty owns it, and Mr. Reed has a contract on the subject property and wishes to, uh, develop it with a single-family residential subdivision. He has requested a zoning classification of RZ simultaneous with annexation. As I mentioned before, the property's about 15 acres. It's a little bit difficult to figure out exactly how many lots you could get on it. The RZ zone allows for, uh, single-family detached homes on a minimum of 3,000 square foot lots. It's rare that we see, uh, RZ lots that small, typically they're in the order of 4,500 to 5,000 square feet at a minimum. But the property also has to contend with, uh, that it is encumbered by the floodway of the west fork of the Stones River. So a good bit of the property will be unusable when it comes to actually plating lots on it. So it makes it very difficult to tell how many, uh, lots Mr. Reed could get on the subject property. But he has indicated that he would like to develop a small lot, single-family residential detached subdivision on the subject property. Uh, the property, uh, is located in the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, and the Salem Pike Land Use Plan recommends that it develop as medium-density residential. And the, uh, the plan defines medium-density residential as all single-family and two-family residential uses that involve a density of at least three units per acre, but less than eight units per acre. With the RZ zone probably on the higher end of that, of that, uh, of that density range, but, uh, generally is, is consistent with, uh, the RZ zoning request. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing and unanimously recommended approval of this zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Blimley, on this? We need to open the public hearing and, hey, we're gonna open the public hearing and ask anyone to come and speak for or against this. Please step forward.
Counselor. Thank you. Uh, my name's Jack Carter. I live 2108 Barfield Road. I have a little piece of property that adjoins this. I'm against it, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Uh, biggest reason, I guess, is gonna be the flooding. And I know y'all hear a lot about that, but the field that they're gonna have to do in the flood plain, which I'm told that you can, uh, they're gonna be allowed to bring fill in, not just cut and fill, but bring fill in, is gonna be extensive. It's not a foot or two, it's a lot of field, and it's gonna displace a whole lot of water. This is, this piece of property overlooks the forks of the river. Got one fork runs in front of me, the other one runs in front of the Hutchinson Farm, Warrior Drive, and up Indian Hills area. It's gonna affect both of those forks. It's, I can't tell you how, I'm not an engineer, but I know when you start restricting water and the way it flows, upstream usually suffers. I have a lot better idea for, for a way this property can be used. I know the city's looking for a greenway, uh, trailhead. Several places been looked at, uh, the, the, the back of, uh, the subdivision across the road from me, South Ridge, which would be great for them, but I don't know about anybody else. In front of me, I think, it's been looked at. That's all floodway. Can't have any structures down there. No way to have a bathroom. This property has about three, four acres. It sits above the flood plain, above floodway, everything. Be great for a bathroom, and the view, it overlooks, like I said, the forks of the river. It flows out. Y'all, it could be something that would rival anything Franklin's got, Nashville's got. There's not many areas left in this state that look like this, much less in the city. I can't think of another area in the city that even comes close to it. And once they start filling and putting houses on it, it's gone. We can't get it back. I hadn't got anything against Ted selling the property. Fine, good riddance. He needs, you know, he's, he's more than, you know, he wants to make money on it, that's fine too, I understand. The city, I think, is probably in a fairly decent financial spot now with the economy coming back. Y'all can afford to buy this. There's not that much money that can be made on this piece of land with the amount of field that's gotta be done. Members, please look at me when I'm talking to you. I'd appreciate your attention. I won't be here that long. I know y'all are getting tired, but this means a lot to me. Please think about long-term. Not five years from now, 50 years from now. Your grandkids, their kids. This spot can be here forever if we'll, if we'll just do it. Hope you consider it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Reed. I live at 1634 Wexford Drive here in the city. I am the proposed developer. Mr. Carter is mistaken about the intent. Actually, there's only, like he said, anywhere from three to six acres that can be developed. The rest of it's gonna remain open, common property for all the property owners. We are not gonna try to, uh, put a square peg in a round hole. This is an extremely small development, um, and the only part that will have ha, homes is the part that's high and out of the flood plain and floodway. There, um, if you had, had the time to go look at it, Mr. Carter's right. Much of the property is several feet, uh, below the flood plain, uh, under your flood level, and therefore it would be, uh, cost prohibitive to try to, uh, develop it. We're not gonna develop it in, by way of building on it, but we will utilize that area as, uh, open, uh, space for the, the, the few residents that will live there. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, I, I, you, we're only allowed to speak once, or I, maybe I didn't make that clear in the, in the initial fabric of this. Is that?
That's true.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that. Mr. Reed, I wanna ask a question, sir. Are you planning to bring in a lot of field, li, field? Or you just gonna build on the, the, the thing that's not the flood plain? The area?
We don't plan to bring in a lot of field, uh, Mr. Young. That, that's not part of the intent. If, if there was an area that's, you know, a foot or two, uh, below, uh, the hundred-year flood plain, of course, we'd bring it in, but most of the property, uh, the way we've got it figured, about two-thirds will remain undeveloped, and one-third will be developed. And, and that's as close as I can estimate it. So, uh, but no, we're not gonna bring in a lot of field.
Any other questions or comments, uh, on this piece of property? All right, with, with that, in hearing, no, and I'll close the public hearing. What we wanna try to do is that, is I'm gonna answer some questions or ask some questions. Mr. Carter, um, the reason I asked that out of order was I wanna know what his intentions are to fill, how much of that's gonna fill, and he says he's gonna fill about a third of it. Uh, no, about a third of the total property will be developed, and the rest will be in the flood plain and the floodway. So I, I think that was a question that you might have had.
Well, I, that's the question I had, but I would hope something a little bit more concrete than I think, or probably, I was hoping to detail down a little bit more the city, though.
Well, you know.
We'll deal with that.
Yeah, we'll deal with that. It's, it's site plan review. This, this whole project will be turned upside down and inside out. As you know, you, you're, you've been a citizen out there for many, many years and worked with us to, to make this, to make this going. It is a little different piece of property. It's relatively small. It's got internal issues, it's floodway, flood, flood plain.
Well, one of the things I should say, that I, I feel very strongly about my decision, or y'all looking at it as a trailhead. And I do feel so strongly in fact that I am, and I told, uh, Mr. Crumby this, we would be willing to donate any materials and labor for the, uh, in the landscape. If you're gonna donate, if you so decide, you can use for future purposes.
Well, you know, unfortunately, we can't deal with that tonight. That's a, that's a Parks and Recreation, long-term capital outlay plan. We, we, we can't, we can't handle that tonight. My suggestion maybe would be with, get with, uh, Mr. Reed and see if there's something that could be possibly worked out, but tonight, we can't, we can't handle that. We've gotta vote this thing up or down.
Anybody got any other?
Comments?
Comments? If I don't wanna make a motion without it.
Fired up.
All right. I'll move for approval on the zoning.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye. All right. That passes. Our next item, 14. Mr. Blimley?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. Uh, the next item that we have on the agenda is a rescheduling of a public hearing that was originally scheduled for tonight. Some important sign ordinance amendments, um, that, uh, that we would like to get before the council. It was originally scheduled for tonight. Our legal department sent the legal notice to the Murfreesboro Post. However, the Murfreesboro Post did not publish the legal notice, and so we find ourselves needing to reschedule. In anticipation of a November 17th public hearing date, our legal department went ahead and sent the, uh, the notice to the paper to run on Halloween, this past Monday, and, uh, I believe that it did run, and so that we would be in good order to schedule a public hearing, meet our legal notice requirements for the November 17th public hearing date. I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, but we do need to vote to schedule this matter for a public hearing.
How many public hearings, uh, will there be?
I believe we have five scheduled for the 17th, so this will be a sixth.
No more than six. After last night with, with eight or nine and 11 o'clock-ish.
I'm ready to go home and see my family, but.
Two.
I agree. How many do we have already on the 17th?
Five. We, we don't anticipate this one really generating much discussion. We think.
That's what you said about tonight.
We had seven tonight.
I'm gonna be here on the 17th.
So this, this one, we're, we're really excited about the changes in this one. We think it's, it's gonna be a benefit to people, streamline some processes.
I move we set a public hearing for November 17th.
Second.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Wright, do you want me to go first, or do you wanna go first on this, the?
Uh, we need to do the, the board appointment, number 15 first.
Okay. The mayor's recommended Mr. Leroy Hodges to fill the vacancy of Ms. D.D. Potter, which was brought up a couple of weeks ago and ready for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, item 15B, I'll just run while I got it.
We need to vote on.
We need to vote.
All right. Did we not vote on that already?
Not yet. Hey, call roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye. Okay, item 15B, I'm going around Ms. Wright, but we'll come back to her, 'cause she's most important. The mayor has sent out a boards and commissions diagram that you all have. We need a motion to pass that. If you do not like your assignment, you can talk to the real mayor. But, but it is in your packet, and.
No discussion.
And, uh, that just plays things. All right? Okay, for, is that, is that correct, Ms. Soto? All right, all right.
You need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Move for approval of the, uh, board appointments.
Second.
Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye. Future appointments. Lambo-Lamberry Board, Mr. Jimmy Tyson, uh, to, uh, take the place of Mr. Gary Green, I believe. No motion is needed, as this will take action next week. There's one more in here somewhere.
You ready for me to go with the beer permit?
Did I miss one? I think I missed one.
Got the bike share opportunities.
That's right, that's right. The mayor has asked that a study committee be formed, a, a bike panel task force, study opportunities of bicycle sharing and, uh, opportunities in that. We do not need a motion for that tonight. In your packet is the, uh, members that have, uh, been nominated by the mayor to be on this board. Ricky Turner, Kent Seiler, Brenda Waters, A.J. Farley, Josh Stone, Barbara Wolke, Scott Gravy, Angela Jackson, or Desigme, and Jim Currie. These would be members of this new board that would, uh... These would be members of this new board that would be put into action, and no further action needs to be taken tonight. I hope I'm finished, Ms...
Okay.
Right.
Let's proceed with, we've got one beer permit. We have an actual change to a special event permit. It was originally approved on May the 12th, and they realized they put the wrong event location. It's still a chamber event. They put the corporate address instead of where the address of the event, which is, should have been 1500 Medical Center Parkway. That is a change that is in order, and we do recommend approval of that. That's the only beer permit we have tonight.
Move for approval of the change.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
I might point out on that, the change that you just made, that is actually going to be at the fountains. I know the council has played a large role in that project. Some of you have been, had an opportunity to go over and see the new building, but be a good opportunity to show off a potential new corporate headquarter building.
Paying the statements.
We have one statement tonight, mayor and vice mayor, and we recommend approval.
You ready to pay the bills?
Eddie, you want to pay the bills?
I move we pay the bills.
Second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Ms. Lance, is there any other business that we need to conduct?
One item I wanted to mention, or ceremonial items, previously shared with you, that Mr. Tracy Wilkins has announced his retirement in January. Tracy really has been synonymous with Old Fort Golf Course. He's been there virtually from the beginning, so we certainly wish Tracy all the best. But bittersweet news, but certainly wish him all the best.
Did you have something? Ms. Gels Harris have something?
Vice Mayor Young, your son Andrew, your daughter-in-law Rebecca, your sweet little grandbabies, and my babies Reese and Ellis, that they've been watching you tonight, and you've done a fabulous job, and they love you.
And while we're talking about Mr. Young, I know you all are well aware that the fire, police and fire training facility, public safety training facility, will be named for Mr. Young, and there'll be a ceremony Tuesday at 11:00 a.m.
After my tonight's performance, you might want to...
Also, on behalf of the council, we'd like to wish you a happy belated birthday.
Yeah. Happy birthday.
Well, hearing no other business, I thank you for bearing with me. You can...
You had a great job.
Great job.
One of these days, when we figure out annexation and plan of services, I'm not holding my breath.
Keep working on it.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.